Welcome to the Monday, April 12th Board Meeting in Queensbury and the Free School District. For the quorum of the Board President, please join me in standing at the place of the flag. When we reach into the United States of America, we serve the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a second. John, Mr. Luther, would you be able to send the mic shade and copy the link? Does that mean no good news looking forward? Okay, well, thank you all for being here. We have a number of people online. Thank you very much for coming to tonight's meeting. We're gonna start this time of year. We do have a budget presentation about every meeting, so tonight is no different. So, Mr. Whitmore, I think we have some good news tonight too, so. Not always good, Scott.
It has really been good news. This is one of the better days for school financing in the state of New York. And we're really happy to be at the end of the budget process, to have the board adopt the budget. And recognizing the fact that a significant amount of federal money has come in to help the school this year. And there appears to be federal money and equity built back in the sum of the four months to help us the years going forward. So, we appreciate the board's foresight and the way they've looked at the budget process as more than a single year, but a multi-year approach. And the action by the federal government has really helped us in terms of what we're doing for next year. So, as we, you know, have the students up behind this, we'll go through this rather quickly. We spoke into the board on several occasions. This online format has gotten us into more detail than we normally do in terms of a presentation for the public. So, what we're gonna talk about now is just the final budget, just a little under $69 million, with the four buses that are under proposition two, and then we have the two Board of Education seats, the five-year term and the shorter, it's closer to four-year term, are the three propositions that we've both already made. So, the budget, as we move through it, it's sometimes taking the same information and presenting it in different formats. The budget itself is broken up into three components. There's an administrative component, a program component, a capital component. So, just about 70% of the budget goes through programming, which is what you would expect. It's money for teacher salaries, books, that type of thing. That is where the change is in this budget. Administrative is generally flat. There is a capital piece that has increased, but that is in line with our long-term planning. So, the overall growth of budget, about 3.4%, really falls in sort of the same three buckets that we've always seen before. What's changing in administrative? It's changing a little bit. Most of that is budget methodology, redistributing some of the budget monies in administrative back into programming, reclassing some of the BOSI costs with need of risk management is a small part moving out of capital into administrative. Could change, actually could decrease in the net cost, but it has changed how we do the accounting for it. So, the administrative piece is somewhat flat. And then the programming, on the next slide, is growing, but this growth is pretty standard as well. So, increase in the program is pretty consistent. What we have every year, about $400,000 in salary, budgeted salary increase, budgeted amount. Benefits are increasing along with that. So, that's for both the instructional staff and people transportation falls under this category as well. And then we have an increase in salary pieces for the transportation department as well. So, the budget change within the programming, but contractual expenses for people that are here, and under capital itself. X1. We have instruction for the debt in a way. Our long-term planning, an increase of about $1 million. That's tax cap compliant budget. Continued additional principal payment on some of these bonds and transitions and long-term debt. And then we're also asking the community to vote on, as part of the general fund budget, a repair of the middle school roof and some furniture pieces where the furniture is caged out. And that is the increase in the capital fund budget. So, the revenue piece, it's hard to look back at last year's revenue when we make these comparisons. The tax levy is increasing just about 2%. That is a recognition of the fact that we do have this additional federal money. Federal money carries related some of the additional COVID costs the schools experienced this year. And for just the increase, continue to have expenditures from last year. Last year, we didn't know where the word was taken, really through most of the year, even almost to this point. As much as this is good news, we don't have solid grounded numbers in what the state is likely gonna be. But the state for next year looks very solid. The state of New York is making a very good job. It appears looking at foundation aid, looking at the equity of the four dollars, getting state money to schools based on enrollment, and based on how much that enrollment, relative enrollment is in poverty and how much that is local wealth. And it's great. They're gonna help the tax burden for the Queensbury School District and allow us to provide an educational program years to come. We do use appropriated fund balances as a budgeting tool. We talked about that a lot. If you were to budget $100, you're not gonna be able to spend all that $100. So, we do have that in there as a tool. We do expect to use some fund balance on the roof, but that is in there as well. So, the overall budget increase, excuse me, is 3.4%, with a tax increase of about 2% on the levy. The only thing that I wanted to point out with this slide now, obviously it looks skewed in the voter turnout. Last year was all absentee ballot. The success rate of the budget itself hasn't been very good. People have turned out, people have voted. But I did wanna point out, in the tax gap era, we have seen decreases in turnout for the community. So, even though it's good news, everyone is here. The state aid seems to be resolved in a lot of ways. In order to keep the programming, in order to keep the, all pieces we need as we enter another year, or the pandemic next year, and having all the requirements around that, we do, we would need turnout to ensure that the expenditures and the programs lined up the way the Board of Education has asked for us, put out to the community. So, that's just this one, I guess, concern as we move to the vote. So, we're right at the end. Maintain this in the public hearing. We'll adopt tonight if the public has a building right input on budget on the 10th, but really that input comes in forms of the budget vote. So, on the 18th, they will go out and tell us as a school district and Board of Education if this is acceptable by the community. Were there any questions at this point?
Any questions among the board?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep, go ahead. Amy, you're back.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitmore. Good news to be. Next, we have a exciting presentation, Battle of the Books, the grade three and five. This is Rosetti and this is Scott.
Yes, girl. We're really excited to be here this evening with many of our students on the screen there. But this is Kosh and I wanted to recognize our grade three and grade five Battle of the Books teams. They competed this year. We've been competing in this competition for 10 years now. And believe it or not, we've had amazing teams in the past, but this year, we took first place in both grade three and grade five. We're really proud of our students on the screen over there. So, we have a number of students who participated at QEF. We had 15 participants in our grade three Battle of the Books team. Of those 15 kids, six students were selected to sit around the table for the actual competition. And our coach, they were led by Mrs. Sarah Oliver, our librarian. Sarah, I think I see you out there. Let's see, Mr. Luther, can we pin her there? There she is. So, Sarah, do you wanna just say a couple of words about this team?
Absolutely. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us on. As Mrs. Rosetti said, this is our 10th year. And this year was unusual since we were not able to meet in person, either for our morning meetings or for the actual battle itself. My kids read 10 books, five fiction and five nonfiction, at a very high reading level in a short amount of time. So, it's a demanding program. They took a lot of quizzes to get ready for the actual battle. And the battle itself was done through Meerpod, which is an online platform, and the kids really excelled at it. A lot of this was independent work. The kids had to study and prepare individually. And in years past, they were able to confer with each other when a question was asked and come to a conclusion together as a team, but this year, they were not allowed to do that. It was a really, really fun year. I enjoyed meeting with the kids via Google Meet every Tuesday morning. And when that first Tuesday morning rolled around, that the Battle of the Books program had ended, we were all a little bit sad to not be able to meet and to discuss a book again. But I've got six of our kiddos on here. If we want to introduce them, Mrs. Rosetti?
Absolutely. Mrs. Oliver, boys and girls, I'll call your name, and what I'll ask that you do is unmute yourself. And I'd like you to tell us your favorite book that you read and one thing you enjoyed about participating in the battle this year and the program this year. So, we'll start with Amelia Kaloski. Amelia, I see you right there in the middle of the screen.
What I liked most about the Battle of the Books was that some of the books I really enjoyed may have been a book that I would have never picked out on my own.
Great. What was one of your favorite titles, Amelia?
Seraplanetal by Patricia McGlocklin.
Good job. And you may or may not know, as part of the competition, when they respond, they have to respond with the entire title as well as the author. So, spoken like a true Battle of the Books participant. Thanks, Amelia. Next, we have Emma Kennedy. Emma, go ahead and unmute. Emma, can you tell us what you enjoyed about participating?
I liked how we would read a bunch of different books, and there was a big variety. We had one that was really scary, and then we had one that was really, like, mellow, and you felt it in your heart.
You felt it in your heart. Very good. What was your favorite book?
A Handful of Stars.
By Luthi Arthur.
Cynthia Lord.
Oh, thank you. We're adding a book list here. Thank you, Ms. Sir. Thanks, Emma. How about Tice Mulder? Tice, I see you on there. Tell us what your favorite part about participating was.
Hi. I've enjoyed Battle of the Books. I've had fun reading to my family and figuring out more books I like. And my favorite book was A Handful of Stars, like Emma.
Come on, thanks, Tice. Next up, we have Mitch Mulder. Mitch, go ahead and unmute and tell us something.
Um, so, my favorite book was Easel Because of Winnie Dixie by Katie Camillo or A Handful of Stars by Cynthia Lord. So, I felt like Because of Winnie Dixie was a really great book, but we had already read it in school. And I felt like A Handful of Stars was a really great book, and it was new. And what I like about Battle of the Books is that it's all about reading books. And when you read a book, it feels like it's a whole different world, and it feels like you're kind of like living in the world.
Great, Emma. I love that. Mitch, thanks for sharing. Sophie Van Hatten, I see you out there. Sophie, tell us what you enjoyed about participating in this club.
My favorite book was A Handful of Stars by Cynthia Lord because I love the animals and the dog that was blind and...
What did you enjoy about participating in the club?
That I love reading books, and it was fun just reading all of them.
Nice. We love readers out there. You know that. And finally, I have John Ingles. John, tell us what your favorite part about participating in this club was. John, are you up there? You wanna unmute? While we search for John, I just wanna also recognize, we had, like I said, we had 15 participants in this club. And truly, each one of these participants deserves a shining moment because they read all the books, they prepared, they helped the ultimate team prepare for that final battle. So, congratulations to these students as well. Landon Barnes, Lydia Beecher, Rebecca Brown, Emily Capone, Avery Kamisky, Vincent Jansen, Chloe Ma, Quinn Naza, Dominic Gastro. So, congratulations out there to all of our teams. Did we find John, Mr. Luther, or...? I know John was a strong participant each week. So, John, if you're out there, sorry, we can't hear you. But I'll pass it on. This is, this is Kosh. Again, congratulations to our team on a great win. Thank you, Mrs. Rosetti. And I can only echo what you said and Mrs. Oliver said. I think we were in the middle of taking our data test when our fifth graders found out they won. And they were so great about trying to be quiet, but we literally could hear them through the walls. We were so excited and so proud of them as we went through each round. You know, they started at third, and they made it into the final round, and they finally came in first. So, we are really super proud of all of the participants. But I first wanna introduce Miss Alicia Fazio. We're gonna be talking about her a lot tonight in her March Madness, but she is also our advisor for Battle of the Books. Alicia, do you wanna speak a little bit about this team?
Sure. So, this team, we started, as Sarah had just said, we also did the meetings via Google Meet. And we were just so excited to be able to meet every week and talk about the books. We do it every other week for about a half an hour. Lot of work. As Sarah said, there was a lot of independent work this year. And honestly, these kids worked so, so hard, and I knew they had it in them this year in fifth grade. They worked hard on their own. I know they did Google meets like outside of our meetings. They met with each other. They talked about the books all the time, created their own study guides. So, really, they, I can't say enough good things about how hard they worked and the teamwork that they put into this. And at the competition, how supportive they were of each other, as well as they could be. Because they couldn't, again, they couldn't communicate during the competition part, but they were, we had extras cheering each other on and being good teammates. And so, they're just a wonderful group of kids. I know that almost all of them, I think that were on the team, are here tonight. So, I'm really excited to let you get a look at all their hard work and what they have to say.
Excellent. Thanks, Mrs. Fazio. It also doesn't help about the warm-up since in those lollipops at 8:30 a.m. to get them ready for the competition, but it's all in good fun. So, first up is Cameron Beecrack. She's been in the Battle of the Books for two years. So, Cameron, why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us your favorite book, and what did you really learn? What was the highlight from this whole experience?
Hi. My favorite book was probably Breakout by Kate Messner. And I really liked how everyone who was in the final battle, they all tried their best, even if they got a question wrong.
Excellent. Thanks, Cameron. Johnny Serrillo, this is his first year doing Battle of the Books. Johnny, why don't you state your favorite book and a highlight from the season?
Hi. My favorite book was Blood on the River by Alyssa Carbone. And I really enjoyed reading the books and being able to meet every week.
Excellent. Cindy McGrath, this is her third year. So, she's been in Battle of the Books since she's been offered in third, fourth, and in fifth grade.
Hi. My favorite book this year was probably Blood on the River by Alyssa Carbone. And what I really liked about Battle of the Books this year was the books we read because this was probably my favorite set of books out of all three years.
Excellent. Juliana Mulder, she is a three-year participant as well. Where's Jules? She's up there.
My favorite book was probably also Blood on the River by Alyssa Carbone. It was, it was really good. Yeah. My favorite part was, like, all the excitement. Like, when you joined that meet, you felt excitement in, like, the room. And when you take, like, that final test, there's so much anticipation. And it's, like, really fun to be with people that love books as much as me.
Lots of energy and excitement during that battle, absolutely. Mary Russell.
Hello. My favorite book was Breakout by Kate Messner. And I liked that I didn't, I got to read books that I typically wouldn't choose to read, and I loved the books.
Mary is also a three-year participant in Battle of the Books. Kate Probridge, another three-year participant.
Hi. So, my favorite book had to be either The Crossover or A Dog's Life. And I love just meeting every other week and talking with my teammates and Ms. Fazio. It's just really fun.
Thank you, Kate. Kyle Underwood, he was new to Queensbury last year, but he participated when he was in third grade in his previous school district. So, this is, he's also a three-year participant as well.
My favorite book is A Dog's Life by Adam Martin. And what I liked the most about Battle of the Books was meeting new people and having fun with them.
Yes. And if you noticed from Kyle earlier, he has his mask off now, but he was a runner-up in the spelling bee, which we're gonna talk about a little later. So, congratulations. That was a busy day for you, Kyle, wasn't it? Busy week. And our two alternates, we have Mikey Sheehan, who was also a three-year participant, and you Tom Corin. There, Mr. Luther, bring her. Go back. Keep on. Next one, Corin. Go ahead, Mikey.
My favorite book was Breakout by Kate Messner. And my favorite part about Battle of the Books this year was that I was able to cheer people on and be able to hang out with people that I wouldn't be able to meet this year because I was virtual.
Yes, great. And we're really excited. Mikey will be coming back to in-person learning on Monday. We can't wait to have you back in time, in-person full-time, Mikey. And Kyle Wilson, this is her first year joining Battle of the Books. She's Andrea.
Hello. My favorite book for Battle of the Books is probably Breakout by Kate Messner. And I love joining Battle of the Books because I review people I normally wouldn't be with and books that I normally wouldn't read.
Excellent. Thank you. All, boys and girls, big round of applause again. We are so excited. Third graders and fifth graders. And I also would also like to recommend, not recommend, also recognize the other participants, Violet Brown, Skylar LaCrosse, Sage Penrose, Gabby Telesco, and Brooklyn Tucker. So, congratulations to all. We really look forward to next year. And I know a lot of those fifth graders are really excited to go to Mr. Brennan, to the middle school and participate with the sixth grade Battle of the Books. And we can't wait for the third graders to come up to the WHI and participate next year as well.
I want to just take a second to say how proud I am of all the kids out there and their families because I know there's work on the back end as families. And to our two coaches, you made school history. It's the first time ever we've had two teams get first place at Queensbury. And Ms. Fazio knows, I've been harking about this for years. So, I'm really, really proud. Two first places, amazing job. But my favorite part of the show tonight was watching Mitchell Mulder in the basement. Mr. and Mrs. Mulder, I think we're on the first floor, and I think Jules may have been out on the lawn. Three Mulders. Congratulations to all our families. I'm very, very proud of our kids. What a great, great group of kids and families. So, thank you.
Now, after we have the board, after everyone agrees, it's always great news to see the kids and see them succeed, see them enjoy the competition and the reading. So, we gotta get them out and share those kids with some of the other kids that maybe don't wanna read so much, like myself.
So, boys and girls, you have totally made my night tonight. I, no fun, congratulations, because that was amazing what you just did. But what I'm taking away from this, I'm hearing your enthusiasm and how excited you were to be a part of this club and the reading and the love for reading is something that will be with you for the rest of your life. For the, like Mitch said, that a book can transport you someplace else. I know when I go on vacation, my Kindle has three out of five books downloaded. I mean, I do that as I pack it. And it's, I read every night, and it's just an amazing, amazing thing. So, keep up the great work. I'm so proud of all of you guys. Good job.
Absolutely, Mr. Mulder. Thank you. Any other board members? Okay. We have, I gotta ask, is that the Battle of the Books, is that the one that we made into the movie? It was like narrated and not, I don't know. Dogs, sorry. I get it.
The Battle of the Books.
Okay, I'm gonna read it. So, next, we have Mrs. Kosh. Good news.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mannix. About the middle of March, Mr. Gannon approached me. As you know, he was at the WHBI for so many years and knows how busy March is at the WHBI, as it is everywhere on campus. But we really wanted to highlight some of the wonderful things that are happening at the WHBI and that during this COVID has not stopped us. And that's been one thing I've been so proud about at Queensbury and all the buildings, is continuing on with traditions, thinking outside the box, and really giving the students the best opportunity that we possibly can remotely and in person. So, we just wanted to highlight a few of those. We're gonna start it off with our March Music Madness. This is something that Ms. Tetlek started last year to help kids stay engaged during music classes. So, it was such a big hit in our building that we continued, wanted to continue this year. Students and staff participated. 900 submissions were submitted from our students. They had to research. They had to list the genre. They had to make sure that the lyrics were appropriate. And then they would submit it in a Google form to Ms. Tetlek. And then she chose the top 32 songs. And each week, we would get an email. The staff and the students would do this during the beginning parts of music classes or warm-up. Or Ms. Tetlek would choose Group North. And then she would have the links to their videos, the lyrics, and then you had to basically vote, basically filling out like a March Madness bracket, one session at a time. We haven't finished it yet. It'll probably be finished by the middle of April, but it's really been something to engage in. I know even at the Kosh household, I sit down with our family. We listen to the songs, lyrics, and we kind of vote as a family. But also, it's a great way for the staff and the students to participate. And we end up with, you know, a building-wide song. And it's really interesting to see the different varieties of genre from staff members to students and what they contribute. As you saw, Kyle Underwood was our runner-up. We held our annual spelling bee last year, this year. That was something that we had the representatives ready to go, and then we closed school. So, even though we don't know if there's going to be a regional spelling bee or not in June, we said we're still gonna do this. We're still going to have our spelling bee competition.
we said, we're still gonna do this. We're still going to have our spelling bee competition. And it was such a great event. Um, we had the classes each take a test in their own classrooms. Mrs. Carpenter or the classroom teachers, um, score them. And then each class has a representative or an alternate. And usually the auditorium, the gymnasium is packed with, as an assembly forum. Parents are invited into the spelling bee. But we said, we're still gonna do this. The kids are spaced out within the gymnasium. Students were able to watch from their classrooms. Parents and grandparents were able to watch from their houses. We got many, um, compliments from grandparents that wouldn't have been able to travel to the gym, uh, to the school, thanking us for being able to provide that, um, for them to be able to watch from home. I know I would take a few pictures and, and send it to parents. And I know, I know Jules Mulder was in here now sending it to Josh and Maria, you know, as it was live, going back and forth. And it just was a different level and a different experience that, um, we were really happy to be able to continue that tradition. Nicholas Mound was our winner. Um, interesting fact, the top four, three of them are fourth graders. And I will tell you, these words are so hard. I probably would have gotten out on the first practice round. Um, and I, our producers were the ones that were recording. And I'm going to Nick, and I'm like, can you spell those words? Because I can't spell those words. But really proud of them for getting up and working through. This was a great event. March was busy, because that was one day, this was the exact same day for our Battle of the Books. Um, as we just saw, our fifth graders, but the same day as their spelling bee, our fourth graders participated. And I wanted to acknowledge our fourth graders as well. Um, the team members there were Andrew Agresta, Alex Bosford, Jeff Brown, Michael Capone, Mallory Kash, Daily Gerard, and Alex Mylot. Um, they did a great job. They did not make it into the final round. It was really nice, um, to watch them work hard. Great teamwork, great effort. Um, again, a busy day. This happened the same day as our spelling bee. And the next, uh, highlight that we wanna showcase in the W H B I is our Drama Club. We couldn't thank the Board of Education enough and the P T A for being able to support this. This is one of the events where it's on a much smaller scale than the high school, but it's really big and important for us at the W H B I. The kids would go over and they would perform for the third grade, second and third graders. They would perform for us and the school. And then we would have a nighttime performance. And we were really, um, thankful that we got our production off in time last year, uh, the same week that we ended up closing, um, by that Friday. But, uh, Ms. Fazio, again, so involved, um, with us at the W H B I, came to myself with a plan. She's like, I still wanna do Drama Club. We met with Mr. Gannon, we had the layout, we had our safety plan in place. And this way, we're doing it this year, we're able to reach more students than we were to, if we would have been able to do one production. So we broke it up into three different parts, three smaller-scale performances. So the first one in February, if you remember, we did, um, hold on one second. Snow White Lit. And this last one that we did in March was Simply Cinderella. And Ms. Fazio and Ms. Tetlek are the advisors for this. We still did the casting, you know, there's thank you notes, there's still programs, there's brochures. Um, we do a recording at their school one day. We, they run through it about three or four times. And then Mrs. Fazio combines into one full production video that gets sent out to the families. And then we really did something that I thought was pretty neat. Instead of dinner in a, dinner in a show, we did lunch in a show. So the kids would come down, um, on a Thursday, perform it live. And just like we did our spelling bee, the students would be watching from their classrooms during their lunch period. It really was a great experience. Um, we still have one more production to do. But I also wanted to take this moment to introduce, uh, Nick Merzik. Uh, so Mr. Luther, if we could pin Nick, he was our Prince Sugar. So we wanted to hear from our perspective of Nick tonight on how being part of Drama Club has really shaped him this year and all the W H B I has offered. Oh, he's right there, Tracy Merzik. Hi, Nick.
Hello.
So tell me, what's been so special about the W H B I this year?
Um, something special I, that I think about the W H B I is that I can actually go to the school and see my friends. Instead of being stuck behind a computer screen, having to see them virtually on a Google Meet, I can actually see them in person and communicate with them much better than I could ever being on a Google Meet.
You are so involved at the W, you're like Mr. W H B I this year. Why don't you tell the Board of Administration everything that you're a part of?
I'm a part of band, or not orchestra, um, Drama Club, chorus. I'm the producer for the morning announcements, and, and I'm a part of Tech Bits.
What's your favorite part of the day, Nick? Come on. Announcements.
It's probably doing the announcements is my favorite.
What do you like so much about, about being our, one of our producers?
My favorite part of being a producer is that I, whenever, if a problem ever goes with the announcements, whenever we're watching it at the class, I can always fill my class in on what's happening, what's the lunch today, and any special announcements there was.
We show you sometimes. We're two coming out with our smart and shape the other day, modeling for us. What does Mrs. Kash have you doing?
Laying on the ground.
So talk to me a little bit about Drama Club. What was so great about being Prince Sugar this summer?
Um, I, it was nice being a big character, though all characters are important to the play. And I was happy that Drama Club could go this year, because I was like, it's not gonna go. But then when I heard it, I was so excited. And then as soon as I came out with the announcements, I grabbed the form and stuffed it into my folder. And the next morning, the first thing my mom heard was, Mom, we're signing up for Drama Club.
Well, thank you so much. Was it, and then we're gonna run it, uh, after Ms. Fazio one more time to, and we know how much she loves public speaking. So talk to us a little bit, Ms. Fazio, about Drama Club this year.
Um, so hi, everyone, again. Um, so the first thing I wanna say was, I just wanted to give a big thank you and talk about how grateful I am that we were able to put this club on this year. Um, one of the great things about W H B I is, um, how many clubs and how wonderful the clubs are that we have, um, and the quality of the clubs. And so it's such an important thing. And this is such a good foundation for students that are interested in Drama Club in any kind of aspect. Um, so, um, as Mrs. Kash said, we were able to actually involve seventy-five kids this year, which is more than I think we usually do, um, by splitting it up into the three shows. Um, and it's just been really fun to kind of get to know them in the smaller groups. Um, each show has its own cast and crew and script, so we did three different shows. Um, and it's been nice to have a chance to even do a stage crew. Um, not the same as we usually do, of course, but they're still able to, those behind-the-scenes kind of kids are still able to get involved, which is really such a nice, um, a nice part of it, too. That was always what I did when I was involved in our plays. Um, but it's been really fun to, to work with the different groups. Um, we just started our third one today. Um, Bell and That Beesky, we just met after school with, actually, a lot of the kids that are in Battle of the Books were also involved in Drama Club. We have a lot of involved students at W H B I, so some of them are still hanging on. Um, and some of our other earlier casts are on tonight, too. Um, but it's been so nice just to see them go with the flow and figure out how to make things work. And we have that, um, with being in the gym or figuring out sound, things like that. Um, but it's been a lot of fun. Um, the kids have been amazing. Um, and again, we're just so appreciative that we were able to, to have this chance to have them be creative and work together. Um, it's been wonderful seeing them so happy, being able to be together and create something and, and do this club. So, um, thank you again. It's been, it's been great. So we'll see how our next one goes. I have, uh, no doubt that it'll be just as fun and exciting as the first two were.
Thanks, Ms. Fazio. Before we move on, I'd like to just showcase some of Nick and the rest of the Drama Club's production. If you weren't able to see it, Ms. Fazio put together a quick, one-minute, um, uh, uh, part of a play that is so funny with, you know, how we, having to stay distant and, and, and being, um, separated from each other. Um, just, we'll display the play.
Wait, who is that? I hope I'm not like a mole, don't worry, I'm a nice guy. Next time I turn to my parents, I hope I'm D P S. I found the girl that went to our parents' and don't forget about midnight. I like my mother. She definitely thinks that D P S is common. I'll find out. That girl's so bad. I got the vanilla. Hate me. She ain't nothing but a jerk. Hello, I'm, I'm in trouble. My friends, it's so nice to meet you. I'm a man, so. Do you like beer, babe? I've never been around a panda. Oh, dog. Who about comic books? I'm only a lot of my lefty with the air manual. Oh, fun. Who about sports? It's way bigger than before. Kind of, equal, but not a good one. Sorry, my stomach is a little meaty, my. You have a bossy stepmother? I'm afraid, um, my mother's driving crazy. Really? Oh, well, we do it something common. How do I treat my princess? Oh, my dear, I'm the owner. Good, what's your name? Let's give it party, start it. I'm gonna be on this, man, I'm serious.
Thanks, thank you again to all the Drama Club students and stage crew, Ms. Fazio and Nick, for tonight. We have two more highlights that I just wanted to showcase. Again, think back to how busy March was. So we had Battle of the Books the same day, Spelling Bee the same day, and we had our famous W H B I, uh, Family Fun Night. Big thank you to our P T A, to Maria Bosford, for helping support and organize this. Again, last year, we were not able to have our Family Fun Night, which is a huge fundraiser and a great opportunity for our families to come together, to come to the W H B I. If you had students, children that live here, you know how important this, we used to call it Bingo Night was, or Family Fun Night was. We would jam-pack over five hundred people in the gymnasium, have some basket options, dance party, trivia, jokes. We just couldn't say no again this year. Uh, so first, I just wanna point out all the people that helped support us. Um, that marked the picture on the right is all the, John Lutringer again. He was helping being one of our co-hosts, managing behind-the-scenes. Mr. Aprile, um, opened the show with some playing with the steel drum. Mr. Lammeray, Mr. Lamb, the singles are behind-the-scenes camera woman. Ms. Eggleton, Mr. Denno, Ms. Fazio again, uh, Ms. Niantasca, they were, they were DJs. And Mrs. Bosford, as well, our P T A Vice President. But in order to really get the true effect of our, our Family Fun Night, I would like to call up again Kate Crowbridge, Jeb, and Alex Crowbridge to get kind of a family perspective of the involvement, not only with our students at the W H B I, but also our family. Hi, guys.
Hi.
So Kate, tell a little bit about Family Fun Night.
So, uh, we all joined this meet, uh, the participants of it. And, um, it started off so fun. We, they were dancing and bingo nights, or, and then bingo cards and stuff. And, um, and jokes and riddles, and it was so fun.
Were you getting up and dancing? Who did you see dancing?
Yeah.
Everyone, right? It was so nice to see every family in different parts of their house. There's a kitchen, there's a living room, on a couch, getting up and having, I don't know. But he had a blast, too, as well, with Ella. Um, what was it like, Kate? Because I know as, uh, Allison Jeb, also, she's her baby. She's her last, on the last trip to the W H B I. You know, to be able to still participate in our Family Fun Night, how does that feel as a family?
It, well, I, it is, she is our baby. We've, we've been with W H B I. We have someone in, in, in high school and in middle school. And so we've been there for, for six years. This is our sixth year. And, um, and it was just, we weren't sure how, how the year would feel and, and, and how Family Night would be. We always looked forward to that. And, um, and to have that experience in March and to see, you know, some of our, our best friends out there with their families, getting up and dancing and stuff was, was, um, was so special. And we just, we just wanna thank you all for, um, we're so grateful for the way that you found a way and, and made things like this happen. I know, I know Jeb has, um, something to say about dancing. He loves doing that.
Well, first, first of all, like bingo, bingo's fun, but I haven't done it in, I don't know how many decades. Um, but like, that, and that's, that night was just so much fun. Like, and, and it's, bingo's fun, but I think the, how you guys did it and the fun that you, um, you were having in the gym, it felt like we were right there. I mean, it was such a gift, and it could not have come at a better time. I feel like, you know, we, we're just at the throes, the end of winter, just looking forward to spring break. And here was this thing that brought, brought all of us together and really made us feel like we were a part of something special at the W H B I. Um, and I also realized that, that I don't think I've had as much fun on a Friday night in a long time, which is a little concerning, but, but not. It's, it is, it was just so much fun. Um, so thank you.
I know, Kate, you were hitting it up with the chatroom. So talk a little bit about how we interacted with you at home.
Yeah, so, um, so we, uh, got asked questions and riddles and like, we were just racing to the chat box and then, like, oh no, we have to make sure they see your comment. So they may, or like, say our name first or something. And like, mention this Hogwarts, because all of the Hogwarts houses and we all know all of them.
It's a lot of fun. So I just wanna thank Kate Crowbridge for participating. We had over one hundred and seventy, at least, logged in. Uh, I think we had a lot more because it was based on family. So it was another way to, to continue the tradition of the W H B I. So thanks, Alex, Jeb, and Kate as well. Okay, one last thing to say before we left for spring break. We went to Disneyland, virtually. Uh, our P E department spun things around with our curriculum, and we ran to Disney World. Um, we left eight days, we took. Um, we started at forty-five, which is the end of the address for the W H B I. Our goal was a thousand miles that we surpassed, that we actually ended up into the heart of the Walt Disney Resort. So we go to the next flight with Mr. Lutringer. Coach Carpenter and Coach Williams, each day on a morning announcement, we would talk about the tallies of how each class was participating. We ended up at the Kipton, New York, which is right near my hometown after day one. Then we ran our way to D C. Then we ran to Richmond, Virginia, to Fayetteville, North Carolina. Day five, we didn't have much going on that day. We had our data test that day, so a lot of our schedule changed. But we went to Dillon, South Carolina, Savannah, Georgia. Then we ended up, um, in Jacksonville, Florida. And then finally at the heart of Disneyland in Orlando. So it was a fun way that we were able to interact with the students. Our remote students got involved as well. Really ended, uh, on a high note going into spring break. We were setting a goal for ourselves as a group. So I know this was long-winded, but I appreciate the board taking their time to listen to us highlight all what the W H B I has to offer in March. And again, we can't thank you enough for continuing to support all of our programs, our clubs and activities that we normally wouldn't have during the summer. So thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? No, just, thank you. I don't, I don't have to follow up with that. It's amazing. And that was March.
Kash, thank you for your energy and, uh, your great, uh, building and, uh, all the things that you, uh, were able to do and all the work and, uh, support of the W H B I. Certainly, great to see.
It's such a team effort. We really have the best staff here, okay, in this, in the area, or even in the world. I mean, truly, it's, it's a whole team effort, and everyone's willing to pitch in and help out. The amount of people that show up on a Friday night with empty gymnasium, dancing around like fools, but knowing that it's affecting kids at home. You know, and that's really, you know, what, you couldn't ask for a better, better staff.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
You have a topic for the board? Okay. So we're going to open forum. Uh, there will be two open forums, uh, this evening to, uh, provide the public opportunity to adjust the Board of Education. We ask the participants who wish to speak during the first open forum, type their name in the chat box. And when called upon, identify themselves and applicable to the organization they are representing. For clarity, we ask that all speakers identify the school where they did matter, topic to be discussed. In order to conduct district business in a smooth, orderly, timely manner, open forum is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. With three minutes allocated to each speaker. And we certainly appreciate the public attendance and participation at our meeting. So with that, uh, Mr. Lutringer, has anybody signed up?
Uh, it's fine, it's fair, we did not have anyone sign up.
Thank you. We'll come back to the other meeting again. So, uh, Mr. Whitmore?
Amendment board moved this item A, motion down two thousand twenty-one, the budget, uh, sixty-nine million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, fifty dollars.
Can I get a motion, please? Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Second, Tim.
Thanks, Frank. Uh, any discussion on the, also? Right now, we'll take a roll call vote.
Trustee Belvedere?
Aye.
Trustee Cabana?
Aye.
Trustee Larry?
Aye.
Trustee Holder?
Aye.
Trustee Mannix?
Aye.
Trustee Malloy?
Aye.
Trustee Shae?
Aye.
Trustee Weaver?
Aye.
Recommend the board move, sorry, no, I'm sorry. Recommend the board move this item C, most approved, uh, feature new resources for private debt support card this year. Have a motion, please?
Tom?
Kathy, second, was Amy?
Amy, yep.
Amy. Any discussion on the motion? During none. All those in favor of the vote, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. And we do have all the, that's important now. Recommend the board move this item C for W. Before we take a motion, before we take a motion, does anyone need any of the items? A, sorry, C for W removed. All those in favor of this is the item C for W, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Any motion, please? Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. I bow to you. All of the favor of the business consent, I have received for W.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passed. Oh, in the, uh, consent item is, uh, Hugh was, uh, most approve our coordinator, capital projects and safety compliance, John Dawes. Um, John, I think they saw you up there. It's one to say hello and, and welcome.
I am here. Thank you so much for having me. Oh, jeez, there I am. Looking forward to getting back to Queensberry. I appreciate it.
John, we're pretty good here.
But that's.
It's a pleasure working with you again.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Mannix. Congratulations, Dawes, welcome forward. I recommend the board move to approve the following expational item, the motion to approve the following resolution. And that is that, um, for the high-risk sport, and see the boys lacrosse. And that's the only sport that's, uh, falls into that category. Dr. Leonard has approved our plan and, um, Mr. Eads has submitted. So it's all set. I recommend the board move to approve action item A. Any motion, please?
So moved, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Second, I'm a friend. Any discussion on the motion for, all right. This is, uh, essentially the same, I know we submitted before, the same protocols. It's, uh, worked out pretty well as far as. So. Everybody roll call vote, please. One more. Trustee Belvedere?
Aye.
Trustee Cabana?
Aye.
Trustee Larry?
Aye.
Trustee Holter?
Aye.
Trustee Mannix?
Aye.
Trustee Malloy?
Aye.
Trustee Shae?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend the board move to approve action item B, the motion to approve the following probationary appointment of the standard of book. The WHBI has agreed by. Have a motion, please? Kathy, second?
Second.
Pat?
Yes.
Any discussion on motion B? During none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. I recommend the board move to approve action item C, the motion to approve the following probationary appointment. Nick Whiden to UMass Social Studies, grade six future. Motion please for letter C.
Seven.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second. Pat?
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion on motion C? There are none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion C, carries. I recommend the board move to approve action item D, the motion to approve the following long-term substitute teacher appointment of Lynn Doherty, QHS art future. I have a motion for letter D, please.
Seven.
Kathy, second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Any discussion on motion D? During none. All those in favor of motion D, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion D, carries. I recommend the board move to approve action item E, the motion to approve the following long-term substitute teacher employment of Kathleen Burton, WHBI grade four and five, P L A, long terms of.
So moved. Pat?
Kathy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on motion E? During none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And I'm going to abstain, but the motion passes. I recommend the board move to approve action item that, the motion to approve the following long-term substitute teacher appointment of Halloween's QES teacher grade three, long-term substitute. Motion, please?
Seven.
Kathy, second?
Second, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion on motion, Pat? During none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passed. I recommend the board move to approve educational consent item C for you. Anyone need any other? Motion, uh, educational consent item D for you, Paul. Okay, can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Amy?
Amy, thank you. Kathy, second. And all those in favor of educational consent item D for you, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, Mr. M. That was the opportunity, uh, to have our second open forum, the same, uh, protocol and procedures applied. If you wish to participate, please just pipe your D's and the, that one. So bring her? No? Okay. We'll go for more, um, any more committee reports? I'm sure we, safety, pretty much. Uh, safety net. I should be at more members there in the virtual format, but we did a short table talk. Uh, discuss some, briefly discuss some of the new diet thing on Friday, uh, but most of the time was spent on the table talk. Um, I would like to really congratulate Sarah Bartrop and the work they've done, um, in the capital high. They really have that program. I appreciate it. They're a special question. Any other committee reports? More member comments?
It's Amy. I'd like to just make one quick comment. Um, the Friday report, I was looking at the presentation for the cleaner internship program, and I just thought that was a fantastic idea. Just wanted to share that. I think, um, it's great when we can involve the youth in additional learning outside of the classroom. So I think it's a great opportunity. And I was really impressed, too, with how much training goes into, um, our custodial staff. And so I think that's going to be a great opportunity. Look forward to hearing more about it as the program unfolds and, and some students participate in it.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. I really appreciate that. Special thanks to Mrs. Barnes, Robyn Scott, and Eric Wright. Um, we hope to very soon be hiring some of our old students that they moved out of Queensberry High School and into employment right here at Queensberry as we built this program. We're very excited, um, so thank you for that. Any other word or comments? Just have a couple, uh, I did want to, uh, give a little, uh, shout out to the, uh, big shout out to the building and grounds, the lake staff, the maintenance staff. Uh, they had a day honoring them, uh, last week, I believe. And we do have, uh, my estimation, I'm sure you all share, the best, uh, vet in, uh, in the area. We, uh, we come to school with the best-looking grounds, uh, the buildings are always in top condition. Uh, above and beyond the meaning that, uh, they've been asked to do during all of this. So everyone done it and had a challenge. So for all of those, uh, folks and staff, we very appreciative we can do every day. And certainly do deserve, uh, your, your, um, day. So, so thank you. And, uh, I know that there was a article in the paper where the mayor stated to approve, uh, changing our protocol from sixty to three feet and, uh, but there are some questions and some things to go along with that. So, uh, a lot of certainly good news. We still have some work to do. Uh, I'm not sure if they discussed any of the plus protocols. So, uh, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mannix. We're, we're not there yet as a school. The protocols did come out over, uh, the week. But we, we certainly have, uh, gone through, Mrs. Trollstraw and myself have looked at things, but we, uh, there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of discussions to be had. At this point in time, the only clear-cut piece that we can see um, is that, uh, chorus and band could move from twelve feet to sixty. So that's one clear-cut piece that came out of this. We did get graduation guidance today. Um, I did prove, I, I literally received, uh, uh, from Janelle Jones. At about six o'clock, I was looking at it right before the board meeting, and still, it's gonna take a little bit of work to figure out what that looks like um, for graduation guidance. But other than that, the new guidance that just came out, we're gonna be going through it on that meeting on Wednesday. Um, pouring through the document and all the other superintendents, the wish we both see said, uh, we're gonna be considering our great partnership with public health, um, throughout all of this. But there's, we, we continue to bring kids back as the board knows. Um, and some of the people that were approved tonight will be filling those classrooms that we did not have enough room to put students in, and we will be hiring more items. Gosh, I have more interviews this week. Uh, this is what I did, you know, working on filling a couple of those positions. So we continue to expand our class because we, uh, so that we bring students back. It feels a little good to have the traffic going, that's for sure. See everybody's face, but more to come on the guidance. Excited, handing you my notebook and I'll hand you a mic. So any other board member comments? All right, uh, hey, not even, there's obviously a list of, uh, information items, um, but that's all there for your bruiser and on the website. So this time we need a motion going to executive session, uh, to section one oh eight, sub three of the open meetings law to discuss the current fine pervert matter that is confidential by state law and by perp law. Have a motion, please? So, thank you, Mr. Cabana, second. Thank you, all of them. All favor going into executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you all for attending this evening. I thank you all the students and parents. Uh, it was great to see you here. So I look forward to seeing you the next few. Thank you all.